Going to, he is engaged in paying attention. So, tonight we're looking at capital budgets, so I'll turn it over to Andrew Moser.
All right, yeah, so in section fifteen of your book is the capital requests for this year by all the different departments. And before we get into the individual department requests, as some of you have been made aware at the finance committee meeting, the police department has been exploring the possibility for leasing of fleet vehicles instead of purchasing. And the representative from Enterprise Lease Fleet Management is here to do a brief presentation, both about the possibility for the police department to lease fleet, but also expanding that potentially throughout the rest of the city for other currently city-owned vehicles, water, wastewater, highway department, and what some of those savings, long-term savings, would look like if we were to lease vehicles as opposed to purchase vehicles in the city. So, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Jeff, thank you all, appreciate it. Thanks for having me tonight. My name's Jeff Morgan, I'm with Enterprise Fleet Management. We're obviously part of Enterprise Rent-A-Car, but we work with a lot of cities and towns and, you know, government municipalities to help them run a more efficient fleet. You know, we've got solutions for maintenance, you know, fuel, insurance, resale, acquisition, and funding, which is going to be the main point for tonight. So, we're working with a lot of cities and towns to help you guys do more with that capital budget. Everyone knows, you know, the vehicles and cars and trucks have just gone up considerably over the last few years. So, instead of increasing the capital budget, we can help you do more with financing and leasing options. So, please, I'm just going to run through a few slides and, as Chief said, so thanks for the introduction. We've got some options and some recommendations, you know, to help achieve, you know, exactly that, more with your money. So, here's some of our local partners. You know, we've recently, you know, within the last couple of years partnered with Preskyle, Coventry, Rhode Island, Worcester, there's just, you know, Newton, Cambridge, Massachusetts. We've got a lot, and we can send you a lot of list of references and folks to talk to if we get to that point, hopefully. But it's really been a great opportunity for us to help. And this is just a brief slide of pretty much everything we can do for you. So, it's not only working within the budget, but our goal is to help you reduce your costs, you know, reduce your maintenance expense on an annual basis, increase your fuel efficiency, reducing that fuel price, helping you get more for your, you know, the resale of these vehicles, and helping you identify the most cost-effective time to get rid of them. And acquisition, you know, pre-planning rather than waiting till the last minute. If you wait till the last minute to buy, you know, a truck or cruiser for the police department, you can end up paying more because you'll just, the options are limited. So, we've got some pre-planning options that we can talk about as well. Finance, up at one o'clock was acquisition, which we just touched on a little bit. Financing, credit lines, you know, we do the open-ended equity lease, which is where we can, what I've got some recommendations based on, and we have financing options too. So, if you prefer straight finance, that's an option as well. But we're a one-stop solution, so we handle license, registration, renewal, aftermarket equipment too. We can handle, you know, the police lighting equipment, or, you know, plows for the DPW fleet, Sanders, things like that, all that aftermarket equipment. So, you get a vehicle from us, it's delivered to you, it's registered, it's inspected, it's ready to go, ready to go to work for it, for the city. And then we've got some maintenance programs, which can save you some time and really, you know, just make it easy to see that data, because every time maintenance is done to the vehicle, we pay for it, and then we upload the information to our web dashboard that's going to, you're going to have access to all the historical maintenance data right at your fingertips. We also take care of reminders through that program as well. So, if your vehicles are due for oil changes, we've got reminders and emails and texts that we can have sent out to you. Fuel program, we've got a partnership with Right Express, which I believe the city already uses. There may be some things we can help you with there. Accident management, telematics, we have a program through GeoTab if you're ever interested in that. It's a vehicle tracking device, driver safety, and then vehicle resale as well. So, it's everything, you know, that you're currently doing today, we can just help, you know, bring a more robust solution to the table for. And the opportunities here that I see for the town, just in learning a little bit more about your fleet is, our goal is to help you reduce your costs by factory ordering, pre-planning, we can help you do that. By reducing the age of your fleet too, we can reduce your maintenance costs, because as you guys know, after a vehicle, after, due to age and mileage, the maintenance tends to increase, so we would recommend a shorter replacement cycle, five, four, five, six-year replacement cycle. And what that's going to do is going to reduce your maintenance expense and also increase your, the resale value of these vehicles as well. Fuel cost, as I mentioned, will go down, and I've got a really good slide that shows, you know, historical data that, you know, these vehicles today are getting a lot more fuel efficient. Even if you don't go with EVs or hybrids, those are options through us, but just even a pickup truck today is a lot more fuel efficient than the same exact make and model just ten years ago. And then capitalizing on that resale, the resale of the asset, if we're selling something that's five or six years old, it's going to be worth a lot more, and that's money we can, we can sell it for you, and that's, that's the city's money. And then, you know, all this bringing down the average age of the fleet, some other benefits are improved safety, you know, like I just mentioned, a ten-year-old truck certainly doesn't have the same safety features that a brand-new vehicle has standard, and improves town image, driver satisfaction, employee morale, all those good things. And then, most importantly, it creates a fixed-budgeted predictable expense. So, you know, if you decide to hang on to your fleet and run it a little bit longer, that's great, you're going to reduce your capital spending, you're not going to buy any assets, but you're going to give it all back in the operating budget with maintenance and increased fuel. So, that's our goal. And here's, the next couple of slides are just a quick profile, I just wanted to show you, you know, some of the metrics on your current fleet. You've got about thirty-two vehicles, we've learned about a few extras, but we can, we can certainly update this. And over here, it talks about the average holding period, so it looks like you're replacing them every ten or eleven and a half years. Average annual acquisition is just, you know, just under three. And then, a pretty significant portion of the fleet is ten years and older. So, just some pretty good, good data there. And then this one, much of the same information, I wanted to show you, the average odometer, it's about sixty-three thousand miles, so that's, that's not bad, that's not bad. But the cities and towns we work with historically are doing pretty low mileage trends, you know, because the vehicles tend to stay, for the most part, in, in the city. And this, this, I kind of wanted to start at the beginning of the vehicle lifecycle, so, and that all starts with how you buy the vehicle, the acquisition process. So, as I touched on a little bit earlier, you know, if you, you can buy right off lots, and we can do that too, if you have some immediate needs, or you have a vehicle that lost an engine or transmission, you need us to buy something quickly for you, you can do that. But what we try to bring to the table is a more strategic approach, and that would be, you know, planning with you, you know, we do our fleet planning in the summertime, because that's when we can get ahead of the next model year. And we, we take a look at your fleet, and the vehicles with the highest age and, you know, that are costing you the most in maintenance, we target those for replacement. And then we would plan factory orders for them. Factory ordering can take, you know, the good thing about factory ordering is we can order the vehicle exactly to your specification, so it can be, you know, for example, a pickup truck would be a work truck with just a plow package and four-by-four, and just basic power options, no chrome packages or additional luxury items. So, we can order everything uniform, the same, and the invoice price is the, is the best when you're factory ordering. And what this slide shows is the difference between buying off a lot versus factory ordering. So, the gray, the gray, the gray bar is buying off a dealer lot, and the green is if you factory order, proactively plan. So, as you can see, before COVID, there wasn't much of a gap, there was about a $2,000 gap, but since then, due to the, you know, microchip shortage and all that, the inventory shortage, that gap has grown significantly. You know, dealerships just don't have the same volume, especially of commercial vehicles, that they used to, and as a result, the prices have increased, and it can be much more cost-effective to, to factory order now. And then the next is about the, the structure, the financing structure. So, the open-ended lease, whenever I say lease, a lot of, a lot of folks, you know, leasing has a well-earned bad reputation, if you've ever leased from a dealership and you've got dinged with, you know, over mileage and wear and tear and little fees like that. Our program is, is an open-ended equity lease, so you, it is exactly what it says, you build equity in the fleet, it's really more of a finance, just not down to zero. So, in this, this visual, you know, for example, up top you'll see the delivered price of the vehicle is $30,000. So, instead of financing it down to zero, like a traditional finance over five years, you would finance it just down to this reduced book value, which is $10,000 in this example. And after five years, you have the option, you can buy it out at that point, but what we recommend is, you know, let's keep the fleet new and efficient, keep the maintenance costs down, and let's take advantage of the resale value. So, what you'll see is, after five years, we'll sell this vehicle, estimated resale is $15,000, and that yellow is the equity, that $5,000 is what's above and beyond the reduced book value, so that's money that goes back to the city. So, and you can use, that's your money, we usually recommend, why don't you put it as money down in the next vehicle, it's going to reduce your, you know, interest expense and just the overall expense of the vehicle. So, just a different way to do it, there's no over mileage or wear and tear. Additional mileage and wear and tear will, will impact that resale value though. So, maybe you don't get, if it's got a lot more miles than we projected, or it's dinged up a lot more, maybe it doesn't sell for fifty, it sells for fourteen, so instead of $5,000 gain, you have a four, $4,000 gain. And then we have, like I mentioned before, the maintenance programs can be a real home run for you. We don't have to disrupt your current process, if you have local relationships that you use, that's fine, we recommend, you know, keep those, you can use some of our other partners as well. But the benefit is, every time the shop, the, your vehicle goes into the shop, any repair over $100, we have our national service department, they have to be, they have to be dialed in for the approval. So, and they'll negotiate on behalf of the city too, so they'll just make sure the pricing's fair, and there's, we have some standardized pricing due to, due to the volume that we can send to shops as well. So, we could save you some money on, you know, basic services, you know, oil changes, brakes, tires, and we pay for the service, that information uploads, you know, real-time up to our web dashboard, so you have that data at your fingertips, so you can see historical maintenance costs, you know, monthly life-to-date maintenance costs, it's really great information, and it's, it's what we use to help make some recommendations to you as far as what to replace on an annual basis. So, this just says, 2021, we had almost $40 million in customer savings by negotiating with, with these shops on their behalf, and our service department's made up of over 200 ASC-certified technicians. Another place we can bring a lot of value, and where there can be a lot of areas for improvement, is resale. So, oftentimes, you know, a lot of cities and towns will be taking, you know, a ten-year-old vehicle and selling it, you know, on your own or trading it in. With our process, what we do is, you know, we're really good at this because we're part of Rent-A-Car, so we, we sell a lot of vehicles, we have over 700 dedicated employees that their sole job is to try to maximize, you know, resale value of vehicles. So, our process is not to buy it from you like a trade-in, our process is to go out and get three bids for your vehicle, and then go with the, go with the highest bid for you. So, we charge $400 to do that, but you'll see the returns typically are, you know, $1,000 to $2,000 more than if you were to sell it on your own or trade it in. So, pretty significant, our goal is to help you buy for less, sell for more, and just reduce those operating costs in the middle. And this is kind of the proof of, you know, the reason our program works, there's a couple of reasons. You know, financially, it works in the government space so well, and this slide shows you the example, and the main reasons are, you guys have really strong buying power. Ford, Chevy, all the manufacturers provide really, really strong rebates for, you know, for the government. And then also the mileage application, as we talked about, it's pretty, it's pretty low mileage on an annual basis. So, this is an example, 2021, 1,500, you know, GMCC area, the retail price is 33.6 on this. But with government pricing, you know, it was about $11,000 rebate on this vehicle. So, what this will show you, that $33,000 retail price is $22,000 for a city or town. So, and what this highlighted box in yellow shows, in twelve months, you know, after putting an additional 12,000 miles on this vehicle, we could actually sell this vehicle for more than you bought it for in this example. So, this isn't always the case, the rebates are changing, you know, month to month, but in this situation, after twelve months, you know, you're, you're at the opposite of a break-even, you know, you could sell that vehicle and make money, and that's kind of how everything works, you know. I wouldn't recommend a twelve-month replacement strategy, that's just a lot of, you know, new vehicles and, and turning them over quickly, but it is kind of how it works from a depreciation standpoint, you know, getting that big rebate, driving low mileage and selling a four- or five-year-old vehicle, it's, it's going to get a lot of money in resale. Here's a fuel card program through Right Express, it's a universal fuel card, so you're not trapped going to one brand of fuel, you can go almost anywhere. And you'll see down the bottom, the National Association of State Procurement Officials has a program for this, and there's no, no card fees for the drivers, this quarterly rebate's of one and three-quarters percent, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I'm sure you guys spend a lot on fuel, so it's, it's probably pretty good. And then the, the payment terms are forty-five days, so it's, it's a great program. We like it too, because it gives us access to, to your mileage, and that works with our maintenance programs and can help make the accuracy of the reminders really good, as well as resale values, so that helps us to provide those on a really quick basis. And I, I spoke about this slide earlier when talking about fuel efficiency. This is an example of an F-150 regular cab, and this just shows you back in 1997, the standard engine in that vehicle was a V-8 engine, a 5.4-liter V-8, which got about 14 miles per gallon. If you flash forward to 2018, now that, that doesn't have a V-8 engine anymore, it's got a V-6, which is much more fuel-efficient, and the miles per gallon went from 14 to 22. So, just by turning over the fleet a little bit more frequently, you're going to reduce that maintenance expense, and your fuel economy's going to improve drastically as well. So, it improved 47% in 10 years. And now I want to get, get into the, the police fleet, and this is a good example of a lot of the analysis. So, what, what we do is, we're providing you with a partnership, so you're assigned a local team, we come up meet with you a couple of times a year to do the fleet planning, and then a high-level financial review at the end of the year. But part of that fleet planning is showing you, you know, what's available. If you tell us you need a pickup truck for plowing, you know, we're going to show you the Ford, the Chevy, the Ram, lay them all out there, show you the pricing, show you the rebates, the warranties, the projected resale values, fuel efficiency, and just help you make the most informed decision. You know, it's always your decision, finally, but this is the kind of information we provide for you. So, this just shows you the 2023 Ford Police Interceptor versus the new Chevy Tahoe. And you'll see, the numbers are pretty similar, the upfront costs, you know, 45,000 to 46,000. Fuel efficiency is about the same, the Tahoe's a little bit more expensive, a little bit less efficient, but not much, it's only a couple hundred dollars per year. Maintenance costs would be similar, and then the big difference is the bottom, the resale value, which is what changes that cost per mile. So, the Tahoe's going to resell for a lot more than the Ford, so making it more of a cost-effective option for you. So, again, this is just, we would do this not only with the police vehicles, but with every, every vehicle in your fleet. And I did the same thing, because I looked at the non-police fleet, and very similar to a lot of the cities and towns we work with, you know, once the police interceptor is retired from official police duty, oftentimes it finds itself in a different department. And I think it is an inspections department that's using, an old one. And what we would recommend is, you know what, take that interceptor, retire it from the police force, let's sell it, because it's going to have pretty good resale value as a five-year-old vehicle, a six-year-old vehicle, and replace it with, you know, for your inspections officer, they don't necessarily need, you know, a police interceptor, it's going to get 10 miles per gallon. They could use maybe an EV, you know, this is an option, maybe a hybrid vehicle, or even this, the Chevy Equinox, it's just a nice four-cylinder, a little SUV, all-wheel-drive, it really strong government rebates, you know, get the, this acquisition cost set up to about $25,000. Run that for five years, and it's going to sell for $10,000, and you've paid very little in maintenance, much more fuel-efficient. And then the EV too, if you have the infrastructure for it, if you have some charging statements, some charging stations, it's, it's a really good option, because you're going to pay very little, you're going to pay very little in maintenance, if anything, and you're going to pay zero in fuel. So, and the prices have come down, a lot of, some of the smaller ones. The website I already talked about, there's really great data, all of our data pushes right up to the webs, web dashboard, so it's, it's really, I mean, it's just easy, you know, you guys don't have to take, you know, maintenance reports and, or maintenance receipts and put them on spreadsheets and look at it that way, everything you just plug, you just log into your dashboard and you have all the historical maintenance data, mileage data, payment data on the vehicle, the vehicle fleet. And then Sourcewell, this is a government buying consortium. We are the enterprise's, the approved fleet management provider for Sourcewell, and because of it, we have fixed pricing for you. So, our resale price, interest rate, management fee, that's all fixed through the Sourcewell program, but it, it's already vetted us out as a strategic partner, which is great, and this is just a snip down here, the bottom of it is just a snip of an Excel spreadsheet that shows that, you know, prove that you guys are members. Looks like you haven't used anything for a while, but, but it's a great, it's a great program, can save you a lot of money on a lot of different things. And then, I just wanted to show you, we're getting, we're getting to the end, so thank you, I appreciate your, your patience. I promise, this is the end. So, I wanted to show you just what it would look like, what you're currently doing today, which is the yellow highlighted number just across the board, and kind of a ten-year look, what, what it would look like if you phased out of your current program of replacing vehicles with cash, you know, paying the higher maintenance expense and the higher fuel by, you know, having an aged fleet, and what it would look like. So, as I said, the yellow is what you're doing today, and this is just the police fleet, so I'm sorry about that, I forgot to leave out that, include that detail. You have about 15 vehicles in the fleet, two, you typically replace about two vehicles per year, the price of those vehicles has gone up considerably over the last couple of years. So, those vehicles fully upfit are probably going to cost you very close to $150,000, if not more. And then if you continue to go to the right, you'll see the maintenance expense, and these are your real maintenance expense, real, true maintenance data. Fuel data is accurate as well, and that gets your total fleet spend for just the police department to about $225,000 on an annual basis. And what we would recommend, and this is just by, you know, providing an equity lease and turning them over every five years, you'll see in 2023, the goal would be to replace five, and the reason I chose five is you have about five that are over 100,000 miles or over seven or eight years old. So, we would replace those, and just to show you what you can do by setting up lease payments, we replace those five, the sum of the lease payments for the year is just under $30,000. Your maintenance expense is going to go down, because we've, we've taken the oldest, you know, highest maintenance expense vehicles out of your fleet, your fuel efficiency's going to go up a little bit as well, and then your fleet spend, and, I'm sorry, this AME, this stands for aftermarket equipment, so that's the lighting. So, what we recommend is, lease the vehicles, pay cash for the aftermarket equipment, and that's going to get you to a spot, so your fleet spend from 2022 is going to go from $225,000 all the way to $150,000, and in so, by doing so, you're going to replace five vehicles. So, it's pretty significant, you know, impact to the capital budget. And then, as you'll see, the column on the right is savings, so it's going to show you savings on an annual basis, and the annual means is going to be right here, so we start at five for this year, so this would be the big, big bite year, and then next year, it'd be, you know, replace two, replace three, the next year, replace two. And it's got an estimated 10-year savings of almost half a million dollars, so, just a way to show you to do, do some more, more with the, the fleet budget. And then finally, I just wanted to show you a snip of the non-police vehicles, this is the city's non-police vehicles, everything highlighted in red is over 100,000 miles. So, I would recommend, you know what, let's replace these, and look at the impact, you know, so we could sell them all for, for pretty good money, each, each one of them has over 100,000 miles on them, and the impact there, this is, again, the non-police fleet, would be very similar to what we did with the police fleet. So, in yellow is what you're spending, in the maintenance, in fuel data is estimated, I didn't, we don't have that data, but it looks like you're spending just about $220,000 on the fleet spend on an annual basis, and that's replacing, you know, on average, two, three vehicles per year. 2023, I'd recommend replace all seven of those that I highlighted in red, and if you go across, it's, the sum of the lease payments is going to be just under $58,000, your maintenance is going to go down significantly, fuel's going to, fuel expense will go down as well, and then your fleet expense will go from $219,000 all the way to $114,000. This doesn't include any aftermarket specifically, I just didn't know, you know, you know, what vehicles would need plows or Sanders, but we can certainly drill down on this, I just wanted to show you, you know, proof of concept. But yeah, it's just, like I said, a way to do more with less, and that is all I have for you, and I'm sorry I spoke the whole time. Does anyone have questions on anything, I can pull anything you wish back up, I think? Any questions?
Yes, no?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, nice to meet you.
All right, so we will jump right into the departments, if Jim, you want to come up, we'll start right up with facilities.
Jimmy.
Jimmy, you're back again.
Back again.
Hold on, the camera's in the way, Jimmy.
You gotta come the other way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm here before you tonight to beg for money. Which, which ones?
It's the right-hand corner.
Well, I don't have that.
Oh, you don't have that.
Start with the Moore Center, please.
Moore Center?
Moore Center.
Okay. Well, I have, didn't have any pictures when I submitted the request, so I had to all take some pictures and get some copies of the package everywhere. Some of the water stains from the leaks at the Moore Center, and what that is, is the newer section, if you will, of the Moore Center, the little one, one-story addition off to the left, that part of the roof is still the asphalt and stone roof, the rest of the building has been done with a rubberized membrane, and that area is leaking continuously. To my understanding, they've had several attempts at trying to find the leak, and, you know, and if you know anything about stone and asphalt, it's not an easy process, they can see where the leak is inside, but, you know, you go upstairs, you shovel the stone away and try to scrape the asphalt, and then, you know, they, they haven't had much luck, I guess, in trying to locate the leak. Most of the leaks are in hallways, there are several leaks you don't have pictures of, because they, the kids were sleeping and he couldn't go in to take pictures, they're in actual kids' areas, when it rains, they got a bucket out. So, I did get, that's, you know, a brief overview, on the last page, it kind of shows you, there's a small photo there that highlights the area that's still on the GR roofing testament in, I don't know if it's color pictures, I can't remember, but it highlights the area that's still stone and asphalt, that's the area that proposing to have replaced with rubberized membrane. It got, I was able to get two estimates, just for the sake of budgeting or requesting, and, yeah. That's my spiel on that one, I guess. Sorry. All right, move right on to City Hall.
City Hall, all right, so, which one's first?
Chimney repair.
Chimney. All right, so, in my process of elimination on leaks within City Hall, I've pretty much narrowed everything down, I've stopped the leak so far up in my office, which is
I've stopped the leak so far up in my office, which is the flat roof overhead. I've been able to repair that. Hasn't leaked for quite a while, so I think I got it. The leak that is in the administrative assistance office, it's not 100%, it's leaking around the big window, but I've got that almost stopped. And then the leak that is in the stairwell going up to HR is chimney-related. I think you have attached photos. I had two different chimney contractors come look. Police Department assisted me with the drone and took these pictures. We're getting water infiltration. That chimney is just shy of being condemned. There's a big, as you can tell, there's a big vertical crack in it. A lot of the mortar has been eroded away around between the bricks. The cap is, as you can tell in the photo, the cap is completely cracked. And what's happening is water is running down inside the chimney. And if you know anything about unheated spaces and chimneys, once that water runs down and then it gets inside, it's coming back outside of the chimney wall itself. And that chimney is right up against the old-style, it's not horsehair plaster, but it's the commercial version of it. It's a kind of a fibrous membrane that they sprayed on chicken wire, and then they plastered over it. And that's what made the, the original walls in this building. And it acts like a sponge. So that's why, you know, a lot of that, what you'd think would be plaster is all deteriorated in the stair, stairwell. I've repaired it once, did some work to the chimney of what I could do, which is highlighted in one of the pictures there where the, where the cricket is on the roof. There's some black there that, that's all that I could reach from climbing up on the chimney, but it's coming in from the cap. So again, I had two roofing contractors, excuse me, chimney contractors come and take a look at the chimney. They didn't give me a bid. They gave me a rough idea of what they thought it would take to do the job because the chimney basically needs to be taken down to the roof line and re-blocked up again. And so an average of what they gave me was 25,000 to do the job because of the location, the type of roofing material, takes extra care and cautions, not an asphalt roof where they could just lay two-bys and build a deck up there and, and work off it with that copper. They have to be a little more careful where they slap mortar and throw bricks around and that sort of thing. What is that on that one?
City Hall exterior paint is next.
City Hall exterior paint. I was able to, that, the trim work is in tough shape. I mean, it's, I think in some places it's going to have to be replaced. It's just overdue by a decade. The windows, some of the pictures, the window frames where, when they did, redid the building, they put remodel windows into the original wood sashes, wood frames. I think one of the photos shows me I stuck a pocket knife in there, and I mean, you could take in a pencil, and the wood's just gone. Some of that wood's going to have to be replaced before painting. But the trim around the second story, that seems to be what I can tell, pretty solid. But if we let it go, as you can tell, it's in a sad state of repair as far as paint goes, we're going to be in the same boat, and it's going to be huge money to replace that because it's fairly intricate woodworking. The window frames themselves, some of the sashes, the bottom sashes can be replaced relatively, in the grand scheme of thing, inexpensively, but it, you know, it's not going to be cheap-cheap. You know, they're still talking thousands of, a couple thousand dollars to replace all those bottom, bottom sashes. But as far as the preventative maintenance of getting it painted, I had a painting contractor come down, and they walked around, they took a look, they took measurements. That was kind of a guesstimate, not a quote, but a more of a guesstimate of what they thought it would take to do everything from the second, on the second story. I told them the first story stuff out front I could do, you know, ladders aren't my forte. And they would take care of everything, second story dormers, windows on the dormers. That's that.
And finally was the fire department window replacement.
And then?
Just one quick question.
Yep.
The painting, it's just the painting, it doesn't, because you don't know how much, so it's going to be higher than that.
Yeah, that's going to be, I'm going to have to take and do, you know, some of the stuff they can patch with sealant, but again, like the window frames, I think they were in the IT office, those, those are gone, those got to be replaced. And then, you know, if it's only one or two, I can do that. But if it's all of them, along the, along this second story, all of these windows, you know, I haven't checked any of these over here. You know, back in the day, putting in remodel windows was quick, easy, and cheap. But if you don't maintain the original woodwork, you know, you're at the position that we're in now, the wood's all rotten. Same with the cupola, I mean, that's going on up there, it's a lot of rotten wood that I'm replacing up there. And then the fire department, it's the same thing. Those are original, to my knowledge, original windows or, or down close to it. They don't, most of them don't function. They're no longer weather resistant, you know, the weather's not staying out, the wood's rotten, the bottom sails, as you can see in some of the photos I sent. I did price out and talked to the Historical Society as far as what we could do, what we couldn't do, and, and did price out some windows through hem and lumber, which is a vinyl product. They're not a single-hung window. They are a awning-style window. The windows that are there currently are single-hung, meaning the bottom sash is open. To replicate that window with the top arch, they were looking at one manufacturer that could do a window at a price of $4,300 per window. But by going with the awning-style window, dropped it down to $1,600 a unit. Talking with the Historical Society, they were fine with that. You know, the outside appearance is still the same, same grills, same arch. It's just that the bottom sash will tilt out instead of an up and down. My recommendation is to strip each window well right back to the brick, get rid of the rotten wood. These are new construction-style window, meaning there's a nailing flange on the outside, so this price or this, this budget request would to also include hiring contractors to come in and strip each window back to the brick, reframe it, install the new vinyl windows, then re-trim it out to replicate what's there now, inside and outside. And not fool any type of remodel in the old wood. Because you'd be just, you know, replacing rotten wood, that's, another part of it's going to be rotten in two years, that type of thing. So get rid of the whole mess and put new, whether it's PVC-type face trim or pine and painted. That's it. Any questions? Thanks, Jim.
Okay. So I probably should have gone over this first before we started, but, so what you have in your book is, on the left-hand column are all the requests that were submitted by the individual department heads. And then through my work and the finance department's work with the department heads, on the right-hand side is what's been brought forward as recommendations from the manager as programs that should be funded, or needs that should be funded. So if you have questions about any of the others that aren't necessarily on the manager's budget, you know, obviously feel free to ask about those for the individual department heads. So next we'll do the library, since ours is short and sweet.
Hello.
Hi, Ben.
So we are bringing you, I would assume that you have our three quotes. Oh, they're not in the book. There you go. So they're very similar. So this is for a roof replacement on the newer part of the building, the 91 edition. So it is over a 30-year-old roof. We are having shingles coming off. So we have Sinclair, Smith Builders, and Gaspur. They all came out, they're all very similar. If you want a detailed explanation of the state of the roof, I brought Edmund with me tonight. He knows the most about it and has been up there. I can't tell you what it looks like up there.
Good for Edmund, I wouldn't be up there with him.
He's been in the cupola even. Do you have any questions for him about the current state? And I know this has been on past Capitol, last year, I don't know.
First, I'd like to say thanks to Tony and Jim for providing two of the quotes.
Yes, thank you for all your help.
So the request is 51645.
That was from an old quote, so these are newer quotes.
Oh, yes.
The 51 was from, I think, 2024, maybe even 2019. So these newer quotes, this number will have to be adjusted based on, you know, if we go low bidder, high bid.
They're all very, the lowest is, yeah, 32, the highest is 35. And depending on the rot underneath, it could be a little bit higher.
So you'd be 40, put 40 in there.
Edmund, do you think that there's, is there rot under there that?
We don't know until we get the shingles off, but we don't smell any mold or see any water coming through the ceiling tiles, so I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you.
This is hopefully preventative, since if we have leaks, we have a really big problem.
Looks to don't like water.
Yes. Moisture's not good.
What about the rest of the roof? Seems like I remember that was done.
That was done just a few years ago, that front portion.
The first portion. The cupola, the original.
So that's in pristine?
Yes. Hopefully for another 30 years.
And blending the two areas, is that a risk?
Yes, Jim, you, you know a lot about it too.
Maybe I can clarify. I've, past life, done several hundred roofs. So to speak to the rot, and most roofing companies will give you a price per square foot or a price per sheet of plywood that they have to, if, when you strip a roof, that section's not that old, so I don't believe it's a board-and-board type roof. I believe it's a CDX-type style roof or plywood roof. So you, you may only run into some water stains or some damage wherever you have a protrusion, like a vent or, you know, where it meets up to a knee wall or, or something along that lines. And usually it's not that big a deal, but they may have to cut out a little bit. So I noticed some of the prices were so many dollars per square foot that they may have to cut out, you know, 15 square feet of plywood and replace it. That would be an addition to the price of the roof. Other than that, it's basically stripping, I did ensure that all the contracts were ice and water shield the entire roof because some of them were, just the eaves were ice and watered and the valleys were ice and watered. With that type of establishment, if you ice and water the entire roof, and 10 years from now we get a windstorm and they lose shingles, it's not going to leak. So it saves, it costs a little bit more, but in the long run, it saves. But as far as the roof itself, it's just aged out. And I don't believe, like Edmund says, he's got no water stains inside or anything like that, so I don't think there's any significant, you might have some water stains, I don't think there's any kind of significant rot in the roof sheeting itself. So it's pretty straightforward, if that helps.
Thank you, Jim.
Any questions? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got a request for the watershed. Stuart to go next, so John, come on up.
Good evening all. Do you have our proposal in front of you?
Should be about four pages after your library one.
Yep.
Wonderful. Well, let me say, the only thing I've proposed this year is what we had proposed four or five years ago, to replace our present bass boat that we use for water sampling and navigation buoy maintenance and placement with a flat-decked boat for purposes of health, safety, and utility. Our present boat is, again, great for bass fishing because you can sit up high and cast forever into the shallows. But we don't do that, and you haven't paid us to do that yet. And we do a lot of other work, other work that this bass boat that we have is not appropriate for. And the, the reason that most places that utilize, do the kind of things that this city does with their boats, have gone to a flat-decked boat is because of safety, health, and utility. I.e., you aren't straining yourself leaning over the side, trying to do work over the side, because that's basically where we do our work. You have the flat deck that you can load anchors, mooring blocks, and navigation buoys on and slide them over the side as opposed to lifting them and visiting the ER with a strained back. So there's a lot of health benefits to using a flat-decked boat for the kind of work we do. And there are safety benefits, i.e. getting back onboard the boat. If you have a bad day and you have a good-sized wave, you would be hard-pressed to get back on our present bass boat, especially if you're out solo, like our staff frequently is. So for that, health and safety, I recommend that, this replacement with a flat-decked boat. And the third reason is utility. We're a lot more efficient when we, when we use a flat-decked boat. We've had people offer, and we've been using a flat-decked boat for a few years, and we're a lot more efficient at getting our work done. We do have a bimini top on the one boat that we have been offered and are using, and we're scorched by the sun a lot less when we're doing our work. So we're able to see our oxygen meters better because we're not in full sun. There's a lot of utility towards a boat that affords that. And we don't have that now, and we should have it for both, for our health, safety, and utility. And one I might even put in there, but is, for the past 16 years, we've taken members of the community, adults as well as students, and volunteers from the Branch Pond Association out to assist us, doing all our work as a public outreach education component, as well as the fact that we partner with the Branch Pond Association for installing and maintaining navigation buoys. We partnered, the city partnered with them before I came here. They, meaning the Branch Pond Association, bought all the navigation buoys, and because we had a boat, even though it's a bass boat, the city installed them. And it's been a good partnership, they've worked with us for years with whatever boat we have available, and we look forward to continuing that partnership.
John, it looks like you're recommending selling this one.
The bass boat?
The bass boat?
Yes.
I mean, is it worth much? And dumb question, I'm sure, but.
Easy answer, no.
Do you sell the motors with it? Or do you, do you have to buy? When you buy a pontoon boat, you buy the motor and everything, right?
Well, it depends. It depends. If you want to buy new, it's a lot more than what I've proposed. If you want to buy new, it's a lot more than what I've proposed, because I've been spec-ing out boats on behalf of the city at my management's request for fourteen years. And the new boats haven't gone anywhere. But meanwhile, we've been scorched up there doing our work, and we love a boat that is safe and efficient to use. So I propose, in this proposal, to get a used boat and to have a more modern motor put on it to be more dependable, to get the maximum benefit out. I would still like the idea of a newer one, or a new one, which the city purchased. The new, the city purchased our bass boat about seventeen years ago. I would love that. But those previous recommendations to you didn't go anywhere. And there's no sense pounding one's head against the wall. I'd rather have something useful for the coworkers to use.
I wasn't asking about the boat being new, I was asking about the motor. So if, if you, if you sell this bass boat, do you sell it with the boater?
Yeah.
Okay. So it would have some value to it, is what I was getting to, but?
Yes, it would have some, right. But again, a seventeen-year-old motor would have some value, but it's a seventeen-year-old motor. And you just had a lovely presentation on motors and motive equipment over ten years old. So I'm, I'm unsure of what that would be worth. I would put a dollar value, value to it.
Do you put a lot of hours on those motors? Put a lot of hours on those motors?
Yes. And our present one has worked well for sixteen years, until last year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, John.
Pleasure.
We'll get some of the other smaller ones out before we turn it over to Lisa for the rest of the night. Fire, if you guys want to come up and?
I won't occupy the rest of your night.
Rescue airbag.
Rescue airbag. So, um, the one request we have is for rescue airbags. Our current set of airbags that we have downstairs are twenty-five years old. I went back with the two previous chiefs, Tupper and Chief Marshall, and we tried to put a timeline to when those were purchased. So it's roughly about twenty-five years old. Typically, the average timeframe that we keep equipment like that, especially given the nature of that equipment, is ten to fifteen years. The other problem is, is there, the airbags are, are operated by using an air cylinder. When the fire department purchased their SCBA's, their air packs for downstairs back in twenty-eighteen, those cylinders did not operate those airbags. So they had to keep old cylinders that they had from the previous set of air packs. Those air pack, those cylinders that they were using are only good for ten, for fifteen years. And then they have to be taken out of service. We can't send them out to be hydroed, and recertified at all, so they had to come out of service. So currently, we have no rescue airbags on our truck, no air cylinders to operate them. They're completely out of service.
Why don't you just give them a quick overview of what a rescue airbag is?
So.
Thank you.
I apologize, I apologize.
I was gonna pretend.
I was totally gonna pretend.
So the rescue airbags that we use are lifting bags. Okay, so they come in various different sizes. Typically, if we have, uh, somebody trapped underneath a vehicle, we're not going to use the jaws of life that we carry to cut open cars. This is, you know, one to two inches, we can get it, slide it underneath, we can use some air. The bags will open up to six, eight inches, and we're able to remove people from under the vehicles. So that capability, we no longer have, and which we've had for a long time. So this is why I'm asking for this. We've gone through, we've taken a look at some quotes, we've looked at making sure that whatever we purchase is able to be used with the, with what we have currently for SCBA cylinders downstairs. Plus, if we wind up in somebody else's jurisdiction, if we have to use their air cylinders, we'll also have that capability. So there'd be some interoperability if we go to neighboring communities and we have to use their stuff. So this is one of the big reasons. But right now, we do not have the, the rescue airbag capability. They are completely out of service. And so that's why we're asking to replace those this year.
All set, thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
And just for all of your knowledge, the new ambulance is downstairs. If, after the meeting, you want to go down and take a look, I'm sure the fire department would love to show you around.
Might need it after Lisa's presentation.
It's not stopped, Jim. It's not stopped.
Captain Willie, you want to come up and present for the police department and the cruiser purchase? And equipment? Please.
Sure. So we had our presentation from Enterprise today, kind of leads into this, but for the Capitol, for the police cruisers to replace two of them, we've, are asking for one hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred, that includes all the equipment. We don't actually really know if we, if we stall and don't buy vehicles. We don't know what we could be paying, because twenty-twenty-three Ford Police Interceptor was only open for bids from the dealers for twenty-three days back in September. So we can't purchase those right now. The only thing that is on some of the lots, talking with the people that we've dealt with in the past, is the Tahos, and those are right around forty-six thousand if we can get the twenty-twenty-threes. And if we are too late on that, then we would be looking to have to go up to bid sometime in September for the twenty-twenty-four models, as well as when Ford opened up.
Is this, this is to purchase new?
Correct. Yes.
And then the other option potentially could be?
Yeah, so this was, this was fully, when we first put that in, we were still in the preliminary with Enterprise speaking with them. And then, obviously, looking at the, what they have to offer, they can get the vehicles. And long-term, the savings of four hundred and eighty-four thousand over a ten-year period estimated kind of made sense, which is why we brought that forward. So this year, we would be, actually be able to replace, if we went with the plan he proposed, five vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles for the lease would be twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars instead of the, the hundred and forty-six. And we, because it's a, a new thing, we estimated some equipment costs. We don't know quite where it would be if we leased the vehicles. We, we've done an estimate of about fifty-five thousand. I think we can shave some more money off that if that's a direction the council wants to go. But we didn't want to keep drilling down on that unless that's where we were.
So that, so this is, this is based on two new vehicles?
Correct.
And the Enterprise, we would be getting five new vehicles, and we would have savings of ninety thousand dollars?
Correct.
In terms of capital?
Year one.
Yep, year.
Year one, right.
Would the equipment that he would need to purchase, it comes out to like eighty-four thousand versus the one forty-six?
Thank you.
Where some of the savings, where some of that fifty-five thousand dollars comes into play, some of it's installation costs. Enterprise has a dealership that they use to outfit vehicles, and we may be able to make some savings there. But there are some things that we hopefully would be able to reuse some of the equipment in the vehicles that we're getting rid of to be able to repurpose into those vehicles. But because we don't know what style we're getting exactly, it's kind of a little up in the air.
If I remember correctly, at the finance committee meeting, there's no obligation to stay involved. So if we chose, it would be just, we would purchase the vehicle and step out of the plan?
Yeah, correct. We can, we could lease for one year and never do it again, and finish out that lease on those five vehicles. We could choose to buy it at any point in time. We could lease for three years and then never lease anymore again. An option he didn't even bring up tonight is, they do have the option, they'll buy our whole fleet and infuse about seventy-five percent of the whole value of the fleet back cash back to the city. We didn't even get into that tonight, not to muddy the waters, but that is also another option that's out there. There's no leasing, there's no mileage restrictions for us, or anything like that. Did I cover everything?
Also, for you and Tammy, it, it's compliant up to Gatsby eighty-seven on the debt load to the city, too. That was the first thing I asked him, I was like, here, any of this. And they're used to dealing with that, so it wouldn't be a problem to be compliant with that.
And where I learned about it was the city of Prescott, their police department had similar vehicle situations. They had a bunch of them. They ended up leasing ten the first six months and ten the next six months. So they got twenty new vehicles in the first year through them. I've spoken with them, and they said it's worked out very well. And they're looking to move the whole city towards that.
One of the questions that we had was whether or not for the maintenance in this area? Because he said that they have their own organizations.
Uh, for the emergency vehicles, which are, we would be considered those, we do not have, there's no maintenance plan that we would pay for. We would still get our vehicles done, we currently use Saunders. He would work with them, he would send them the bill, they would track everything. We would have one monthly bill for our service. And that would obviously save the finance department some time. And if other departments were on there, it would also be their, their bill as well.
Okay, so they don't, they don't have that maintenance plan that you?
So highway, water, wastewater, all those vehicles would be able to have a maintenance plan.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and that's a?
And they have ten vendors in the city that they work with, yeah.
And that's a fixed cost, so they would?
And that covers everything.
It would cover everything, yep.
I have a question. So, um, what we have on our page, which is if we were going to buy two vehicles, we have one forty-six, six, and on, on their sheet, they've listed that as a hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Correct.
And so then if we decide to not do that and we decide to lease, the lease is twenty-nine, one four four, but we would have, also have to add those, that fifty-five thousand after market, right?
Correct.
Fifty-five. So, right, so instead of one forty-six, six, our capital would be eighty-four, one forty-four? Is that what you think?
But I honestly don't think the one forty-six is a, a completely true number, because we don't know. We, we know that the Ford SUV went up nine thousand dollars last year. We don't know what they're going to jump to for twenty-four vehicles.
So the one forty-six came from last year's?
Well, it came from the twenty-twenty-three Tahos that are currently available.
And that doesn't include, so the one forty-six doesn't include the fifty-five thousand, right?
Yes, it does.
Oh, it does?
It does, yeah.
So, I mean, so it'd be twenty-nine, one forty-four times five plus the fifty-five is really how you would look at it for the cost of these five compared to the two?
No, it's total for the year.
Twenty-nine thousand, one forty-four.
No, 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 but I mean for the cost of the vehicles. We're going to get five vehicles, because if you take the lease, it's twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, right? For those five vehicles?
For all, yeah.
If you take that times five?
No, 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 that's for all five.
That's all for all five?
No, I, no, I know.
She's saying for five years.
Five years.
Oh, five years.
Twenty-nine, one forty-four times, five years.
I got you.
Plus the, thank you, plus the fifty-five thousand. It's only a hundred and, what's about two hundred and five thousand? But that's for five vehicles, and we were going to pay a hundred and fifty for two.
For two, yeah.
Yeah.
So it makes?
It's, it's hard to figure out what the downside is. So is, is there anything that's glaring that I'm not thinking of in terms of the, this process? Because, I mean, the, the one thing I think of is, well, it could go up. What Enterprise is saying that they're leasing for could go up, but we could exit out of that. So the first year we're in, once we sign the lease, we're in. So I'm just trying to think of, is there something we should be thinking about that is the downside?
Well, one thing to think about isn't really a downside, but it's a plus is, this is all based on us spending for the fleet spend of two twenty-five, five. And we know that the price of vehicles keeps going up, so the savings could actually be potentially more than half a million dollars at the end of the ten years.
If their rates stay the same.
They can always buy better than we can.
Yeah.
It's an economy of scale.
And then, another thing we've never been able to do, to do is with them ordering, pre-ordering vehicles exactly how we want them, we've always been taking whatever we've had to get on the lot. And I know we've paid more money some years than we should have probably, but we didn't have any choice.
The biggest thing too about these leases is you're actually not paying for the entire vehicle. You pay, because you have a residual value. I have, I'll, I said at the finance meeting, I've leased my vehicles since nineteen ninety-five. I've never bought a vehicle, because it's just so much, I can have, it's just so much cheaper to have a, have a vehicle. And I'm the same way. It doesn't seem right, but it really, truly does work. As long as you don't keep your, I mean, if, if we kept our vehicles?
If you like to, like, run your rust box into the ground.
Right, exactly, then it doesn't work.
But we wouldn't do that.
But we wouldn't do that, nor is it safe for the police department to have those old vehicles.
And there's no mileage restrictions on those, so it's unlimited mileage?
No damage, no mileage, holes from the equipment are fine. And I, I think we're going to be able to save more. We're, you know, we're twenty-five-ish thousand maintenance, we're probably going to be over a couple grand this year. I think we're going to be able to save more, getting rid of the five hundred thousand-plus mile vehicles. And so that number might be even, be able to be drilled down a little bit quicker.
I did get a kick out of him saying we ought to have low mileage. Does he realize we're ninety-four square miles?
Another thing he didn't touch on that was another plus that he talked extensively to us all about is as part of that fleet management process, if we have vehicles that, because they're constantly watching the market, if we have vehicles that have significant value, they'll reach out to us and say, hey, we can sell you, we can sell these five vehicles right now and actually make the city money with those vehicles. And, you know, that's, that's something that now?
And apply that to the new lease.
Right, and apply that, so there's additional potential for savings there. So I mean, now we run vehicles until they either have no value whatsoever or, and, I mean, the last couple of highway trucks we've scrapped, because they haven't even had trade-in value worth, you know, worth messing with, so.
And it sounds like within, I mean, this is like a rough estimate, but within any given decision, like we could decide to get all electric vehicles and pay less for fuel. There's all these decisions within there, right?
Yeah, options, yeah, for sure.
Maybe this information is in front of me, but if the city's interested in buying two vehicles, what's the price if you leased just the two vehicles, just to try?
They would probably do that, sounds like they'll?
Uh, I would take, maybe take forty-four thousand minus the twenty-nine. Because the next year, the, in twenty-twenty-four, we'd lease two vehicles.
It seems to be about seven thousand dollars a vehicle.
I just, I'm not suggesting, I'm asking that if you, if you've got two up for replacement, should we try two instead of five, jump right in? I'm asking that question.
Yeah.
And to the lease defense, if you will. I have signed a lot of full-service leases in business, from Ryder, from Chrisway, from Henske. And I even have some from Enterprise. And it isn't quite as fluffy as it looks, but you can't beat them at their own game. I currently have two trucks from Enterprise. And they spin them out at seventy thousand miles. And again, it's not, it's quite as fluffy as it may look. You know, there's some, some challenges that go on with it. But it's far less than buying. That's been my experience. It isn't quite seamless when you take your truck to Darling's, because you need your truck serviced and back quickly, and they want to negotiate the bill while you're sitting there on the sidewalk with no truck. Okay, so some of that goes on in the private world. I'm not saying it goes on in this municipal plan, but all of those lease companies, in my experience, certainly have negotiating power, but they don't have a cost of being without the vehicle. But you can't beat someone at their own game. And to speak to Enterprise, one of the unique things about them in private industry is they one of the unique things about them in private industry is they use the normal channels of service. Whereas a Ryder wants you to go to Ryder Truck Rental to control their costs, okay? Whereas Enterprise says you need new tires, go to VIP and, and we'll call up and take care of the bill and rebuild you or, or whatever it is. So out of the four, I think they're the newest in the fleet world. But it, it works pretty well. They, when we have a truck hit seventy thousand miles, they'll call up and bring us a new one. That conversion is tough because you have GPS systems and all that stuff, but it's still better than owning. Far better than owning. I would like to try just two as opposed to the five, but that's just my, my.
Is there a reason you chose five to start out with?
Because they're all over a hundred thousand miles.
That was their recommendation.
They're going to start maintenance diving us.
Maintenance.
And I thought the twenty-nine thousand, one forty-four was fairly reasonable compared to the one forty-six we were proposing or the eighty thousand compared to the one forty-six we were proposing.
Yeah, some of that twenty-nine is based on the resale of our, the five vehicles they take. They're going to sell those and then that money's going to be applied towards the lease payments, which will help drive that, that lease payment amount.
Is that factored in, is that factored into this number he gave?
They've estimated, they've estimated the value, yeah, to, to get you to that twenty-nine thousand.
Basically, you're taking what equity you have and lowering your lease payment.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I know we can't take a vote, but would it make sense to have for future workshops is to have Enterprise price up the two vehicles and the five vehicles so that we have that information and help us to make a decision? Does that seem reasonable to, for them to come back on that? And then we'll have both of those options?
Yeah, and also to see what it does to the budget. So, because the, the leasing wouldn't really be capital, the, the equipment going in it would, but the leasing would be put into their budget and then reduce the capital budget. Like to see what that, what that does because it does reduce the budget.
I'd like to see what the lease would be if you didn't trade the vehicles because that can skew the truth pretty fast.
He, he did some estimates and it was, yeah, yeah.
Because basically this cost is giving our equity into the equation. That doesn't mean you have to do it. I just would wonder what that, what that does to the number.
They probably have all that information.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
Yeah, no, no, we can, we can come up with that.
All right.
And you said Prescott's been doing this for a couple of years?
No, they've been a little, well, they've been a little over a year now. And they were, they, you know, the, the first couple were working out all the kinks of what equipment to get in them, getting them delivered, and then the other ones came seamlessly. They haven't had any issues and the city actually was moving towards moving their whole fleet into the same scenario.
When you get to the point of no equity in owned vehicles to depress that number, it could change things. Follow what I'm saying, like Prescott, let's say five years from now, they have nothing to depress that lease payment because they have no equity to do it with. I'm assuming, maybe I'm.
Yeah, that, well, the equity was, like he showed in the Tahoe, was the eighteen thousand. So if the residual was ten, we're still getting eight thousand back for those vehicles. That's what, long-term, if you look at the Fords and the, and the Tahos, that's where the money comes back in. The Fords start losing, you start losing money. So that was what was able to keep us down, you know, year, from year five to year ten in the eighty to ninety thousand dollar range for the whole fleet.
In the lease world, I have learned that, you know, you may want a Ford and Enterprise may want a Dodge because they have this volume purchase. And so we wouldn't know that as a private individual. We wouldn't know that Dodge gives you better value than Ford or Chevy or whatever, but they know. They know all of that. Kind of exciting.
Get some new information.
Thank you, Sean. Lisa?
So can I just ask a question? So.
Who?
I'll do mine first.
Oh, sure.
So can I just ask a question real quick, though? So the body cameras, is that something that just came?
Not running forward.
Didn't bring them forward? Okay.
There's grant opportunities and things we're going to explore.
Oh, awesome, okay, okay.
Sorry, Mike, I didn't see you sitting back there.
No worries.
He was napping.
He was. You awake?
I am awake. Good evening. This whole lease thing is very exciting. I only have two projects that I put in for this year. One of them is one that we established a few years ago, which is, it's called the collection system upgrades. And this is basically money that we put aside now to help keep our collection system where we need to and help for planned and unplanned expenses that come along with our collection system. For example, we have a manhole replacement that we need to do. We have a road project that we need to take care of, but we have a pump station that needs to have the wells backed out, which we have two this year. This was just an effort on our part to get, keep our collection system where it needs to be and avoid any issues that we may have had in the past as far as either not funding it properly or having unexpected things occur that we don't have funds for. So we established that a few years ago. We put thirty thousand each year in it. We didn't put it in last year, I don't think, because we wanted to reduce the budget. But I did, I am asking that it be put back in this year because I do know that we have at least two pump stations that we need to have backed out. Majority of the money that we put in our sewer collection line, I mean, our operations budget is now being used for vacuum camera work. It's using around forty-plus thousand each year for us to back jet and camera, a third of our sewer system. And so this is, like I said, for, like, we have some road projects that are going to be coming up. Typically, we have the DOT raise the manholes for us and they charge us per. This would help cover that or the manholes need to be replaced and the rims need to be replaced. And so that would allow us to purchase those rims and covers. Like, if it, say it was High Street, there'd probably be twenty-five or thirty rims and covers on that that are going to need to be looked at and placed possibly. So that fund was set up for those things to occur. Because we don't know, I can't give you a fixed number every year on what's going to happen. Sometimes unexpected things happen in our collection system. Light happened a few years ago. And so this was an effort to make sure that we had funding available to take care of some planned stuff, but also there's some of the unplanned stuff that comes along that we need to get fixed. We need to make sure we have adequate funding for. Any questions on that one?
Mike, you, you put money in the reserves. I mean, I saw that you have the, you have it requested in your budget this year.
Yeah, we didn't put it in last year.
Because that is a requirement.
Requirement per.
DEP when you.
Yeah, no, not anymore.
I was gonna say, yeah, I think that aged out.
It aged out.
It aged out. But, yeah, so typically we put thirty-five thousand a year in a capital reserve account. Last year, we opted not to do that. And so I had spoken to Glenn about that during our meeting last year and I'm, I understand the position the city's in. We need to do what we need to do. I just would hope that we would start refunding that following year because we have had some serious capital issues like we're going through right now. We just spent a serious amount of money, probably thirty or forty thousand dollars, trying to convert over from composting to shipping our stuff to Canada. The year before that, the centrifuge cost us almost eighty thousand dollars in a, in that breakdown. So the capital reserve account is, to me, critical and I don't prefer that we not, not fund it.
Do you, you don't know, do you know how much money he has in that reserve? Do you know how much money there is in that reserve?
I, I mean, I don't have it.
I think it's three-hundred-and-twenty thousand, maybe. Something in that range, last time I looked at it.
Okay, thank you.
So wait, does that mean that this and this are the same?
No, no, this is, I guess it's aged out. But one of the things that we had with the DEP when we built the new plant was that we would put thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars a year into our reserve so that we don't get into the position where the plant is depleted and then we can't, we don't have the money to fix it. So this, but that's for the plant. Well, at least it used to be the reserves.
Yeah, so the.
Not the collection system.
So just to clarify, Michelle, what Michelle was talking about, when we built the new plant, the first permit that the new plant got from the DEP required that we have two percent of our operating budget put in a reserve account. And so at that point, it was fifty thousand a year. And then that eventually aged out, even after Michelle was no, no longer here, Tammy was here. And then once that aged out to fifty, uh, the fifty thousand, we dropped it to the thirty-five thousand. Because, because that's what we were doing before.
Before that, yeah.
And so, yeah, so that's the reserve account, so the capital reserve account is going to be fun for, you know, major plant problems. And this, you know, but we had no real reserve account. We had none for the capital, the collection system. And the DEP, our insurance company, was pretty adamant that we need to start properly maintaining and funding the collection system. And so that is why we created this in an effort to make sure that happens. And then the next project that's on here is a project that's been on here before. So at the plant right now, when we have to transfer septic from our storage, small storage tank to the bigger storage tank, we manually haul a gas power pump out and we hook up lay flat lines and stuff to it to be able to pump from the septic tank into the storage tanks that we de-water out of. In the summer, it's less of a problem because we can just pull it out there, leave it out there all summer and leave it hooked up all summer. And then unless we have trucks or something that need to go through or whatever, we have to disconnect it and move stuff. But in the winter, it's every day. So in the winter, you bring it out, set it up, at the end of the day, pick it up, drag it back because it freezes. And so we can't leave it outside. And so this proposal would be to take a pump that we've had for many years from the old plant. It's a submersible pump, drop it into our septic tank, have an underground line go into the storage tank, have it either on a float system or an ultrasonic system, something that will allow it to turn on and off automatically and be seen on our skater system so we can monitor it and get alarms from it. And to take away the guys being out there all winter dragging this pump type and forth and dragging these hoses and setting these hoses and stuff up all the time. So, I mean, there's a safety aspect to it. There's also, it's, you know, once you turn the pump on, nobody's going, we don't stand there and watch it. So if something happens, like the pump shuts off, runs out of gas for some reason, and people are still coming, we still have trucks coming, then you get a high level alarm from the septic tank saying, hey, we're, we're full. So we have to stop the trucks and we have the, the gas and start the pump up, wait for it to pump down enough where we can start letting the trucks dump again. So it just becomes very inefficient at that point, you know, if the ball does get dropped. And so I've been asking for this for a few years now, to be able to just try and make that a permanent setup and automate it and become much more efficient operation for everybody involved.
Any questions? Sure, I'll set, Mike.
Thank you.
Adam's gonna go?
Harbor?
Good evening. Two requests this year. The small one is for repairing the cribs at the harbor. They hold the main door. They've settled year after year, reached out to Mr. Seavy and we've got a price of less than fifteen thousand, but the only that fifteen thousand gives us the option if there's any rotten wood on the top of the timbers to replace them as well.
So in our thing here, it says only, it says ten thousand, but the sheet says fifteen.
Right, so the ten thousand will be the rocks themselves, the mobilization of the barge and putting it in and the extra was for in case there's any rotten timbers.
So this should be fifteen.
This should be fifteen. It's a lot better than eighty-five, though.
Yeah.
Right.
But how come it was eighty-five?
Well, before we were, we were using bid prices from Procter and Niedera and it was all mobilization fees.
Did it come from Rockland?
Yeah.
Any other questions on that one? I didn't know if there's any other matter on that. Second one is the big one is for the dredge. It's a federal channel, but we have a cost sharing with them. And this is only fifty percent, I believe, of the total, so four hundred thousand this year. And then after it's approved through the Army Corps and completed, we have to pay the next four hundred.
It is, yeah, because I keep forgetting, is, I know there's another request going in, but is that ready to go? Are they, they're ready if we, if we contribute, if we sign on?
Well, it's, it, it's two different things. So the, the part that we're responsible for is twenty percent of the CAD cell. The, what's being put forward through the Army Corps of Engineers now in the congressional earmark spending is five million, which is the completion of the project, the dredging and everything. That, we don't have any cost for that portion of the project. The only cost that we incur is the twenty percent of the CAD cell.
So what's the CAD cell?
That's to dispose of the contaminated soil. So when they dredge it, it's got chemicals.
That's what this is for, because the dredging itself they're doing.
Correct.
We have to deal with the stuff that comes up.
Right, right, right.
So the CAD cell's four million and the dredge is five?
The CAD cell was like two-point-five.
Correct.
And then.
The dredge itself was.
And that, when do they want to start?
So isn't twenty percent?
They're in the designing phase right now.
Okay, we'll pay some. So if we're paying twenty percent of the CAD cell, that's two-point-five, why do we need eight hundred thousand?
Well, the Army Corps estimated it at four million dollars for the CAD cell.
Oh, that is four million.
For the CAD cell itself is four million.
And then the dredge itself is another.
They have to dig it out. We don't have a contract from them yet, you know, these are their best estimates. They're still in the planning phase.
They're not, they're not going to use the same dump site that they use when they dredge before?
They can't because they have to, the CAD cell is a contained area disposal site. So they have to find a spot that they can dig at mid-tide and lower, deep enough to put all of the spoils in and then cover it with good spoils. So in off-toppers, it's deep, so that's literally just a dump site. So they may put the good spoils out to toppers, but all of the contaminated material will go out to the CAD cell.
Even the eight hundred thousand is not guaranteed, like Adam said. They're still in the designing and planning phases. So once we get to the point where we're further in the process, we'll have a finalized number. But we know it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood. But we know it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand, so we're asking for the first four hundred now.
Can we lease the CAD cell?
He's coming back, it's a good chance to ask him.
That's wicked funny.
Thank you, Adam.
And then there was one.
Well, there's still Jason too, but he's gonna stay till the end anyway, so.
Yeah, we didn't forget you, Jason. I did.
So, maybe a mute point if we go with the leasing option, but one of the things on my list, I'll say it up there here, is...
Why we have such a big table?
How much do you think you could get for half this table?
Um, so do we want to start highway transfer station, where do you want to go?
Start with highway.
Okay, so if we go with highway, what I just passed out, which you'll see is a list of our, um, trucks. Starts with our, uh, wheelers, which are the double, our bigger trucks, double axles, then the single axle big trucks. Our one ton slash one and a half ton trucks, our pickup type trucks. And then down the bottom is just some of our, uh, bigger equipment, just to keep track of some of the bigger pieces of equipment we own. Give you a kind of an overview of years, the mileage, and what they do. Because I'm up here, one of the things I'm asking for is a three-quarter ton truck. Whether we purchase outright or lease it, that doesn't matter to me, I guess that would be a conversation we could have with the leasing agent. Um, to purchase it is about sixty-two thousand dollars. We would be replacing a two thousand nine or the two thousand nine three-quarter ton shop truck that was an original Foreman truck from Iron Grant before he retired. Um, it's no longer able to be stickered, it's been patched and limped through these last couple of years because it's one of our heavy-duty, most-used trucks, as far as getting the crew to and from job sites, patching, hauling stuff, it's one of our major trucks. So I'm asking to have it be replaced.
Does that sixty-two thousand include a plow?
That includes, I believe so, yes. Yeah, that would, yes, you're right.
That's the one called two thousand nine GMC pickup on their big list.
Correct.
Yeah.
Truck fifty-two?
What's that?
The one you're looking to replace is number fifty-two.
Yes, it's fifty-two, the oh-nine, yep, with a hundred and thirty-plus thousand miles, yes. So then, moving on from trucks, um, one of the other things I have on the list is a compactor. Currently, the highway department shares a compactor with the water department. Um, this has worked well in the last few years, but as we become more and more productive, a second, um, compactor is, is needed. We have very often have two sets of crews working on two different, um, ditching or driveway culverts or big culvert or catch basin type projects. Because we have a qualified team, we can usually break it up into two different operations, which require two compactors. Sometimes we rent it, we can rent it from Grand Rental for about five hundred, four hundred and seventy-five, five hundred dollars a week. But really, to have two, one would be owned, is, is owned by the water department and this one would be owned by the highway department. It just makes sense, um, to spend the five hundred dollars a week, three or four times a year. Over the course of the long term, we would be better off owning one ourselves.
Is the compactor the one with the big roller?
Comp, nope, not the big roller, it's the compactor, it's like a walk behind piece of machinery. It's like a plate compactor essentially, and it bounces up and down and compacts, um, the earth, the dirt around the culverts, um, over pavement patches, like when we do water leaks and we have to do, um, fill the gravel and dirt back in, you gotta compact everything so the gravel doesn't settle. And then I think so...
Patch trailer.
Patch trailer. So, we have, currently have a patch trailer, it's a two thousand and eleven, so it's about twelve years old. It has been ideal up until about two years ago. Um, we had an issue with the burner, which is the thing that heats us, so takes asphalt, heats it up in the wintertime so that when we go patching, it adheres better and stays better in place. Um, our burner burnt up, we tried to get, um, we've tried to fix it ourselves, that didn't work. We tried to have a plumbing company come in to help, because it's kind of like a furnace boiler essentially. So we had like a furnace slash plumbing company try to come in and help us, and it's to the point where it's not fixable. So we're looking to replace it, um, at a cost of about fifty-two thousand.
So when you, when you do that, you're using your old asphalt that, like you save from when you dig up roads, correct?
We, so-
Do you put, do you buy patch to put in there?
Right now, we're buying patch. We've done a combination of both. The really old stuff is hard on the, on this, and partly why I think the burners are burnt up is because the old asphalt doesn't have enough liquid asphalt left in it, so when you heat it up, it just, it's really dry. If you use some of our newer asphalt, like, so let's say we did a repair and we had some leftover stuff that's a couple of months or, you know, not that old, that stuff can be reheated and reused fairly easily. But to go dig out the back pile, it's, it's, it's not ideal, it's hard on the system. But yes, there is some cost savings to being able to reuse.
Because originally, I think, on the first one, that was the return on investment, was the savings on the-
On the patch.
Purchasing patch.
Yep.
Just to heat up the patch, it was to use asphalt and save the money out of the budget on that? I just didn't know if that was successful or not.
Yep, I mean, it was, like I said, up until the point where the burners started to go downhill on an old, twelve-year-old machine and it was just hard and it wasn't-
Yeah, it's not just a burner, it's a, it's a double, double box, and it heated and cooled so many times, it pitched a lot out. There's no centerpiece anymore.
What is it by the last one, two thousand and eleven?
Yep.
Is it on this list or no, because it just doesn't even work, so you don't even have it?
It is not on, this is kind of what I'd call like a smaller piece of equipment.
Yep.
This is just the big piece, there's, there's quite a bit more equipment out there, this is just the big stuff.
It's a tow behind.
The higher dollar stuff, I guess.
It's a tow behind, it's not a-
It's a trailer.
Yeah.
Like, you just have to tell me, is it padding the ground, is it driving?
You hook it up to the pickup truck I'm asking for.
Do you want to sell that? Make a list.
So, um, I just want to, like, reiterate, you know, when we met with Glenn and had a conversation about what we wanted and needed as a department, you know, every year I've been up here preaching, we need plow trucks, we need plow trucks, we need plow trucks. This is the first year since I've started, so five years, that I'm not up here saying, I'm not saying we don't need a plow truck, but I'm saying we need these things more than we need a new plow truck.
Yeah, you're saying you need a plow truck and you need this even more than you need a plow truck.
Correct. So, we took the plow truck out of the request and said, these are the three things we really need, so.
Is that going to make it so next year, you're going to ask for two?
Nope.
Oh, great.
Very good.
Nope, we've thankfully, over the last five years, have put, made some really good headway on getting our fleet in order. And it's not, like I said, it's not that we don't need one, can't use one, it's just, we looked at it and said, these items are more important to us as a department than a new plow truck at this particular year.
And so on the left-hand side of stuff that didn't get over to the right end, so the equipment truck, that is the plow truck?
Yes.
And what were the temporary traffic signals, is that those things that you put when you close a road?
Yep, so those were for, you know, flagging, um, a lot of times we have to flag roads. And back in the day, you used to be able to get flaggers from like flagging companies and rent them essentially. Nowadays, that's next to impossible to get unless you rent them for an entire summer. So, flagging operations is basically taking two, sometimes three of our employees, depending on where we're working, in flagging. The idea was if we got those signals, it would be, first of all, safer, we don't have flagger people stopping traffic. And that also gives us back some staff to do more work instead of having people flag.
Can you rent those?
You can, it is cost prohibitive, uh, I mean, you can, but for the cost of buying them, it's not particularly worth it. For the right project, it's worth it, but not just to rent them for the summer.
Move on to the highway garage?
Yep, so the garage, the first one I have is the bathroom update. If anybody's been up to the highway garage and seen the original bathroom out there, it leaves a little bit to be desired. The toilet does not work, if you're playing. The urinal is a hole in the floor.
I guess we can't sell that.
Um, so we're asking for money to do, to redo the bathroom with our own, with our own, um, labor force. So this is just materials and replacement fixtures and that kind of thing. Uh, we want to put in a wall and actually make it a bathroom where you have a door to close. Right now, we as a female could walk through with somebody, it's, it's just not ideal.
Is there a photograph of the urinal hole in the ground somewhere?
But, not ideal bathroom, we're hoping to update it.
I think they need a new one.
And we're not selling that.
Um, the next one is replacement of overhead doors, because there are nine large overhead doors at the highway garage. We would like to start a multiple-year program to replace these doors. There are numerous issues with the doors, including ones that can only be operated manually. There are doors that are bent and tweaked and the panels no longer set properly, leaving gaps for snow, air, heat loss, that kind of thing, tracks are coming apart. The ones that can only be operated manual are a safety concern, those big doors, um, they're heavy. So we want to start a process of replacing all those overhead doors.
How many did you say there are?
Nine.
There are nine, and this much would replace how many of them?
Was it all, yes, yes, actually it was. So when I wrote, when I wrote this, we didn't have a finalized number.
Okay.
But this would replace, I think this is actually more than we would need to replace all of them. Not a lot more, but slightly more, because we left, there's some unknowns, if we need new tracks and some other stuff that wasn't in that original book. So, this, I think, would do all nine of them.
Do you want to, last time, was it twenty, twenty years ago?
The second one when we did it.
I think we did a couple, I think there's a couple of them that are newer than the rest of them.
Right, I sure remember that, yeah. Like, is it normal to replace stores?
Oh, yeah.
So many years? And they get used a lot.
They do. Um, I think that's it for the highway.
Harbor?
We did the harbor.
Transfer station?
Uh, transfer station. No, I was forgetting something.
So I don't say Steve has something.
Question, are those insulated garage doors?
They're, yeah, they are. Well, they're doors, I'm thinking, the doors are, there's just not much on the sides.
Okay, what are they, so they, the ones that are there now, are they insulated or not?
Yes.
They are, okay.
When they close, if they close?
If they close, and that's the thing, is if we can fix the doors and the tracks, then we can start fixing the holes and everything else to tighten that whole building up.
Could we put one of the hand-me-downs in the bathroom?
We could make a bathroom out of hand-me-downs.
There we go.
Wake up, turn it into a wall, like a folding wall.
And then we can sell it on Etsy.
I can tell, we, we've been at this a long time.
All right, so we're going to the transfer station. Uh, we're looking at, hopefully, getting a new forklift out of the transfer station. The current forklift was purchased used, it's had various leak and issues, um, the last few years, and it's nearing its end of its useful life.
Is this the one that we had-
We ended up having, what's that?
Is this the same one that we had trouble with?
A while ago, yes. Um, a major repair was done late in twenty twenty-two, but it's going to only continue to cost us more, um, in the future. Also, the actual forks on the forklift are rounded, they're not square anymore, which is a safety issue and concern that if we were to keep this forklift that we currently have, we'd have to at least fix that per, um, some of our safety inspections we've had recently.
How many forklifts do we have, just one?
Just one. So that's the forklift. And then the other thing, I think, for the transfer station is the loading ramp project, which, the loading dock area is too narrow for the forklift, and the forklift, when they back out of the trucks, where we put our cardboard, um, when they back out, they don't have enough concrete area to turn around without going into the mud or grass, which is well and good in the summer when stuff is dry. But when it's winter and it's icy, that's an icy problem. In the spring, when it's muddy, it's been stuck in the mud before. So we need to do an expansion, um, a width expansion per, essentially, of the loading ramp dock. As well as, um, as you can see from some of the used pictures, they're not great, they're black and white, but there's some safety concerns and issues with broken rails. The door, as you can see in the picture, I think is included in this project. The doors out there also needs to be replaced. The, uh, piece of metal that ramps between the truck and the ramp, the concrete deck itself, um, we'd like to replace that with one that's, we fabricated this one ourselves, but we'd like to replace one that's load-rated. It's basically just a project to repair, and then in this next picture, you can see the broken concrete and cracks in the concrete. Kind of just a facelift and rehab of the loading dock area. The MMA and, I believe, Safety Works, not what Safety Works, that was MMA when they were out. Um, one of the things I mentioned is that, uh, those safety rails that are popping out of the concrete, you know, it's, it's maybe supposed to be chained off and secured so that nobody can fall off of that loading ramp.
Any questions?
I have just a, nothing about the cost of anything, but what's a rotator attachment for a forklift?
So, in our scenario, it's, it's literally a rotator, so most forklifts are just up and down, right? Ours, because we're dumping stuff from containers into a baler, it actually picks it up and rotates it so we can dump.
Side dump.
Side dump it, yep.
There, thank you.
Yep.
Can I just email the council her photos that are printed, because the print quality's not great? So you can see the photos on your tablets in color, and same with the roof, the chimney repair from Jim. Hopefully it'll help, because they didn't come out great.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Did that in a good time.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Are we talking about local roads?
We'll do it another night.
We'll do it another-
Because it's going to take a while.
Okay.
We're going to have more workshops, so we might as well not.
Yeah, we'll, we'll plan on, um, in committee reports, trying to figure out dates. So if you can be thinking about what days work best for all of you, and then we can, we'll do that, that will give everybody time to think about it. And we'll just, we'll set some new-
We'll circle back to local roads and finish up with Jason.
You want me to hand these out that I purchased so I can look at them?
Yeah.
Sure.
When we come back to local roads, here's what we're looking at. I'll let you take one and pass them around.
Hey, Jason.
You're still awake in there, Jason. It's your time.
So did we.
Okay, do you think? Have any ample things for your consideration? Um, I would add on the list as I have it here. I think it's the same. Uh, so the first one on here is Microsoft Office. Um, it's, it's labeled Microsoft Office. We're actually going to go into Microsoft three sixty-five. Um, it's Microsoft's subscription service. It includes the Office suite, which is Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, those basic Office applications are all used in there. Um, it also includes some other things like their antivirus product that we can switch to, included in this price. So we can, you know, get rid of the antivirus product that we're paying extra for now. Um, so it's a, the larger suite of software gets us a lot further than we have now and will always be current with the current version versus how we are now, where we're back on, we're still using Microsoft Office twenty sixteen. So, um, this will be a big jump for us to get caught up.
Will this be in the cloud?
What's that?
Will this be in the cloud? So like we can use it?
So, kind of. I'll get to that on one of these other items. So when we get out some other changes, this will bring it. Um, there is a cloud version, but we'll still be using the locally installed Office applications on our computer system.
So if this is a subscription, is it going to be this much every single year going forward?
Yes.
So maybe it shouldn't even be in the capital budget?
So the only reason it is in capital is because historically I was buying Microsoft Office every five or six years. And we keep, you know, so we keep it for five or six years, so it came under capital. So I have money in there already to cover the rest of the purchase price, so I just kept it in capital. We can pull this out if that's more fitting, but in future years, it won't be in capital.
And it has its own accounting now, and it's like the hottest thing in Gatsby right now, is how to account for these subscriptions. So it is.
Everything is going subscription.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, in, in the future, it won't be in capital. Um, okay, so that's the first item. If you have any questions.
So, I, I think we need to just clarify a couple of things. So the eighteen thousand, there's additional costs above and beyond that eighteen thousand for this initial purchase. Correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He has.
Yes, the initial purchase is approximately fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that's where the rest of that money is. We already have it.
Yeah, I already have that and we've been putting aside. But going forward, we'll need that, almost all of that every year.
Fifty thousand?
No, eight.
No, no, no. So the eighteen gets us to fifty now. So going forward, you'll need fifty thousand every year.
Oh.
Really?
Yep. We have a hundred and two employees, and we have to be in the government cloud to be C G S compliant. So we pay more than regular business customers would pay to be in the secure cloud.
And you, and you.
They don't split up.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry. You know, you, you remember me and IT, right?
Right.
So, but you're not going to be in the cloud, but you're going to pay the subscription price for being in the cloud?
Yes. So, it's their subscription model. So our email, our email will be in the cloud. Our email server will live in the cloud. So all of that is on Microsoft servers. So that data is in the cloud. We won't be storing our files, like work processor documents, things like that. That we still, we'll be still. The problem, so the, the big thing is, we're using Microsoft Exchange on-prem right now. Microsoft Exchange on-prem is, it's not going away, it's still a thing, but they're pushing people hard into the cloud because of, it's more secure. So over the past two years, we've had several incidents where there were zero-day vulnerabilities with Microsoft Exchange that we had to jump on to either mitigate or patch immediately, that people who were in the cloud didn't have to worry about. Their cloud product didn't have those same issues. So, that's kind of the direction that everyone is moving towards to, you know, mitigate those kinds of, uh, tech problems.
So if you've put all of the Office in the cloud, is it way more expensive? So you don't have to have servers?
No. So, basically you can't do that. No matter what, you're going to have servers because we need the servers for like Trio and Cassell and all those other things that we're using. Um, and we actually, and I'll get to this when I get to the server hardware line, we actually do servers for all city departments, including the schools. So, they contribute, they will be contributing thirty thousand this year, uh, it's our next year, towards that expense. So we owe schools, library, water, wastewater, the SCADA servers, everything now is on our big server, main server cluster. So, we'll always have a need, I'm not going to say always, but for the foreseeable future, we'll always have a need for servers on-prem. So, by moving to the cloud, we're moving our email to the cloud. Really what that means is we're getting the Microsoft Office, or Microsoft three sixty-five subscription that enables us to have the current Office products, Teams, all of the, you know, everything that goes with that. Um, and also get our email into the more secure Exchange online. So.
Okay.
And then we'll be backing that up locally as well, because Microsoft doesn't guarantee the security of your data, thank you, Microsoft. So, we still will need to back that up and bring it down locally. It's not only in the cloud.
Does everything locally gets stored on the servers, not on the devices?
Correct.
Next.
Okay. Next I have in here, uh, twenty thousand for a streetlight LED conversion. Um, and the reason for that is because one of the first steps, when, when a city decides to convert to LED streetlights, and these are the Versant-owned streetlights, you have to buy them from Versant, like the first step. So, this will give us the money to buy those streetlights and own them. And then we can work with a contractor to do the LED conversion, which is usually financed over ten or twenty years, uh, at a huge savings over a little bit of time. So, um, it's, it's one of the few no brainers that, it's kind of like, it sounds like leasing vehicles, but we really know the downside to doing it. So, um, this just gets us started on that process. It's, it, it's like, it's like a million dollars over twenty years. It's a big savings.
Server. Keep going.
Server software and server hardware. These are what I've kind of talked about together. So this is the last year of our existing server lease. We leased our servers in twenty eighteen. Now, we've just made the last payment, so this is the refresh year. So I'm looking to refresh those servers, um, hardware and software. I am requesting to lease again, so maybe this is not the right place for the hardware line. I'm not leasing the software, but I'll only be requesting to lease the hardware portion. Um, this is for primary server cluster and also backup server cluster. So this is basically buying two clusters. The backup cluster is basically a, a, basically a replica of your primary cluster that you can run everything on if you have a failure or a nat- natural disaster, it's something that takes out your main cluster. So this others is located offsite in the location. So, that's the bulk of what that is. It's basically replacing the server infrastructure we have now, the three-shits end of life. And the soft, the software is what's required to, you know, make a work, circle licensing, uh, SQL licensing, you know, Microsoft SQL database server. So, yeah, that's, that's actually what that comes down to.
How did this server hardware upgrades go from four hundred and fifty thousand on the left to forty-five thousand on the left?
Lease. So, we, the lease payment is probably going to be between ninety and a hundred thousand. The school department will be covering thirty of that. And the to- so the total project cost is of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand. We will lease it. School pays thirty. We, we were paying thirty-five, so our increase is whatever that.
Fifteen, fifteen-ish.
Yeah, so that will be our additional lease payment going forward. A lot of that is just increased hardware cost. The hardware cost alone is about twenty percent, plus more storage on these ones because we've, we're at, we're at between seventy and eighty percent storage utilization on what we have now, so we can't get more storage on the new cluster.
Which one covers this new?
It's part of the primary cluster, so that's all under here. So the one other advantage of this, a big advantage of this is, if you've been around a while, you've heard me talk about virtual servers. Um, we've been doing virtual servers since twenty twelve. The new thing now we're looking to do with this is called virtual desktops. So our desktop computers will essentially become a thin client, a dumb terminal, whatever you want to call it. They are just a portal to access your, your desktop computer, which actually lives on a server, you know, downtime. So, the plus side of that is you can access that desktop anywhere in the world, from your phone, from a tablet, from your computer.
You just sign in and then you're on.
You just sign in, you have a two-factor authentication, a little key fob, and you're in. It's all your stuff, all your files, and it works just like you're sitting here at City Hall. No E P N needed, none of that. So, it's one of the things we struggle with now. People who work remotely or even on the weekends at home, it's not the same as being here when you have to go with E P N. It's slow. Sometimes they, you know, units won't load or whatever program they have that we're using. Some of the files don't synchronize correctly. So this eliminates all of that. You log in from wherever you are, as long as you have a broadband connection. You'll have full access to your, your B C, your C L. And it means also that we can increase the lifespan of our desktop PCs from five years to seven to ten years. And it also means that we don't have to buy an actual full-blown desktop computer. We can actually buy a thin client computer, which is half, approximately half the cost of a regular desktop computer. And to the end user, the employee, there's no, no real difference. They, they'll, they won't even notice that. Your webcam works, the ZOOM will work, the team work, all that, you know, works. So, it's a, it's a big improvement for what our employees will be, you know, seeing. And one other thing, the li- like the library, if they want to take advantage, you know, they have public computers that are, we have some that are probably ten to fifteen years old and still. Um, and we can put them on the system and they'll be just like, you know, great and good.
You can use the Zig, the old Zig units, right?
Yeah, Zig. We're actually looking at another product. I've looked at Zig. I'm looking at iGel is the other one I'm looking at.
Same thing.
Same thing, yeah, yeah. So what you can do is you take, like iGel and Zig both offer an operating system that you can run on your existing computers, that turns them into a thin client, a managed computer. So you don't have to worry about keeping the local Windows installation patched and all that. It's all done through their console. And that's all fairly inexpensive. It's the hardware and the software licensing on the back end is where it's really expensive. But it gives us redundancy. Everything's backed up. The hardware cost includes backup storage. I mean, this is, this new firewalls, it's really a complete network refresh when this is done. And I won't, I don't ever like to say like, you've got to do it, but the servers we have now are at end of life. So if we don't at least refresh those, the V D I, the virtual desktop, you don't have to do it. We're really hoping they'll support that based on all the protocols that go with it. Um, but we really do need to refresh the servers. They're, you know, out of warranty as of this year with no, no option of extending that. And we've already started having part failures. We've had, uh, two memory modules fail. Uh, we've got a, we've had one whole chassis fail. Uh, the way the system works, there was no downtime, no one knew it except for me. Um, so it's been a great system. You know, that's all happened in the past six months, so I'm expecting more of that type of stuff as we get in the year, in the year. So.
And what's your sign?
Signs. So I was asked to look into an electronic message sign. They're very expensive. So, uh, this would be for a, approximately eight-foot-wide, thirty-inch-tall changing message sign. It also included, um, on the top of that, a small strip that said Elsor City Hall with the, with the city seal above it. It was very nice.
One-sided though, right?
One-sided. And we had it placed here. I just, I just have to come down and give them a digest. The placement of the sign can change. We can talk, we can talk about that later. I had them, you know, put a, they did a rendering. I should have, I can send it to you when they.
We have one in our.
Oh, you can get it. Okay. Um, so that would be out here on the lawn facing kind of towards the library. Um, so the thirty-five thousand would include that brickwork base. We can cut that back if you wanted to do maybe like shrubbery or something like that. We, we just wanted something that kind of fit the character of the building, go all in, but the worst-case price scenario. And we knew we could cut it back if we just wanted to change how we, you know, decorated it, basically. So.
How much is a two-sided?
It wouldn't double because you already have all that other stuff there. I don't know if it's two-sided.
Like the school, like the high school, that's two-sided, right?
Yeah, so when we were looking at the high, so we actually were helping the school department when Dejock Street opened, because they were going to move that down. But the sign company didn't want to move that. They tried to sell on the new one. So at that time, it was twenty thousand for just the two-sided sign. I'm missing a bunch more now, but. I don't know what it would cost, but I know it wouldn't double the cost of that. It would probably be, I would guess another five to ten thousand. But that's.
And that's with the brickwork for that thirty-five thousand?
That thirty-five is the, as you see in that rendering.
Who's responsible for programming all the witty?
I'm not witty enough. Nate Department.
Ongoing operation of this is very, very tiny.
Yeah, the electric, and then it comes with cellular for life, so it's, it's a cellular connection. You don't have to pay monthly subscription. Um, so it's really just, yeah, paying the electric and putting the messages on there.
That's.
So, and, and I haven't proven this, but that may qualify for ARPA funding under the community outreach provision. So, not necessarily outgaming, uh, just something that gets it.
That's it?
I think that's all right.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
See you in a couple of hours.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we'll be back here in.
No, it doesn't do anything.
Eleven.
It's too late now.